All right, it is five o'clock and we're going to open the Select Board meeting for September 10th. Our agenda this evening, we have public comment, the Tax Aid Committee, approval of the minutes from August 13th, 2024. Brian Flynn is going to come in and, I believe, and discuss the sign policy. We're going to call the special town meeting for November 18th, 2024. We have appointments with the NPIC designee from the Economic Development Committee, a tax abatement for David Simmons on the property located at 100 Simmons Way, the ARPA reallocation proposal, designation of the Union Building Designer Services Evaluation and Selection Committee. That's a good one.
That's my fault.
And the Town Administrator's Report and any topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair. So we'll open it up to public comment for anything that is not specifically on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone here that cares to speak to that? There being none, we will move on. So next on is the Tax Aid Committee. So this is a committee that we had set up in order to allow generous folks in town to be able to contribute to a... You just missed public comment. Do you have anything in particular you wanted to speak to? No? Good. All right.
Pure excitement.
Yeah. So there is a law in Massachusetts that allows the town to set up a tax mechanism to collect donations to be distributed for the elderly or other people in need. So the committee is being set up for that to set up the rules and regs or execute that process.
That's right.
And we've had, we had a really quick and eager response from five people, which is fantastic. And so that was, it was a five-member committee, I believe, we were established.
We have three resident appointments under the statute. So it allows the board to appoint three residents. We appointed the treasurer and the chairman of the board of assessors. So we just need to make the, the board needs to consider appointments of the three residents.
Okay. So we have five folks here. We have Nicole Roth, who actually is here. We didn't know if you were going to be able to make it, but you did. Erica Flynn, Lori Brooks, Senator Monroe, and Ann Farina.
Ann Farina.
Ann Farina. That's Ann Farina right in front of you.
Was Nicole telling you, I thought was, did she just inquire about the commitment before or the timing of it?
Yeah, she's decided not to.
Okay, all right, well, I want to make sure I didn't miss anybody. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
So let me ask this question. Does the committee have its charge? Do they know their scope and what they want?
The committee's charge is simply to come together, to create rules and regulations on how the funds collected will be, and set forth kind of a criteria on how they'll be distributed. That's just basically what the statute, how the statute defines the committee.
So this is a committee that would, they're not simply just creating rules and regs, but once they've established the rules and regs, will continue to run the process. So it's, this is a committee that will be ongoing, not just a timeframe.
That's right. They will create the rules and regs and criteria and then be responsible to make decisions on distributing the funds.
Okay.
And all of their work is going to be under Section 3D.
Yeah.
Have you guys seen Section 3D? Okay, so let's, I think, we do. So, Madam Chair, I'm going to move that we appoint Ann Farina, Nicole Roth, Erica Flynn, Lori Brooks.
You can only appoint three of them.
There are three.
Oh, what is this?
Those are the five candidates.
I would, I would.
As much as we would love to appoint everybody.
I would appoint all five, yes.
All right, so we're gonna, so there's three on here. So with these asterisks.
Okay.
The statute only allows us to appoint.
Those asterisks are people that.
Yeah, unable to attend.
But Nicole actually is here. Okay.
So we have a decision here to make, right? We have five candidates in three spots?
Yes.
Correct. So perhaps each one of you could introduce yourselves and maybe express your interests. We'll start, we'll go in order in which they're written here, for no other. Nicole?
Well, Nicole Roth, I have been obsessed with what I do. I've been working for the address for 40 years. I recently retired a few years ago in animal behaviorists and also on the ASPCA anticoagulation behavior team. I'm on the medical reserve. So I do a lot of volunteer work for the needy, misunfortunate animals and people. I'm a strong advocate for senior citizens. I've been here for 40 years of working for people that can't afford their medicine and they can't afford to stay in their homes. That's where I would even place to go when they committed their service and their stress. So, it's okay. I really am happy to do what I can to help these people. I always said if I had a million bucks, I would go and give all that money to help these people. So I'm just more interested in developing programs and finding ways to help the people that really need the help. So that's what I'm doing. I can create all kinds of ideas.
All right. Excellent, thank you. Erica? In a nutshell, yeah.
Sorry about all the students, you know, we've done a couple different things in town. Still doing some town. But this is actually something that I actually brought up in a presentation a while back. Not quite the same, but similar. So that's why I was very interested in being part of it. I do have a question that I'm wondering if someone can answer. I saw that in the announcement that people can make payments as part of their tax payments. But what about someone like me where my mortgage and taxes go through one payment? I don't pay taxes directly to the town, it's handled by my mortgage.
I don't know at all, and probably Jason can explain this, but there is the opportunity to do it through excise tax.
Okay.
Right?
You can also just write a check to the town and walk it in. So this is one extra dollar for the elderly 3D fund.
Okay, yeah, I just, I did note that, that was an option. As far as what I do, I'm financially almost first-hand for companies. So I've done finance for 20 odd years in accounting. So that may count in handy. That's it.
All right, cool. Lori Brooks?
Hi, I'm a lifelong resident of Dunstable. Just wanted to help out other residents of Dunstable. I've worked for the government for 38 years now. Budget, finances, procurement, logistics.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. Senator Monroe is not here. Former. Moderator, geez. Wow, yes. Thank you.
Yes, hello, Ann Farina. Moved to town and built her houses in 1996. Had a very great pleasure to be the town moderator for probably 10 years or so, which was enjoying. Also served on the planning board for a series of trumps as well, which was also fabulous for me to do. I am a lawyer, I've been a lawyer since 1989. I still practice in law. I work in house for a financial services company. Developing pools is basically what I do every day. Hopefully I'm suited for the committee's work.
Great, thank you. Little snapshots of.
Yeah. I don't particularly have any questions.
No, I think it's, it's great to have volunteers, first and foremost, because sometimes we struggle with that a little bit. And because it's a, it's a new starting sort of committee and organization, I think it would probably benefit us for those that, you know, it's only three, but if we had an alternate, because someone may say, hey, you know what? My work schedule ramped up and I can't fulfill all of it. I know we've done that on some other groups, especially like the rehabilitation group for swallow and things like that, just to have, you know, it's like someone you can call in from the dugout helps every now and then. Because I know schedules are busy, especially at the fall and school and life and all that stuff. So I don't have a lot of preference in my, just like having people volunteers.
I think that's an interesting idea. I mean, this person obviously has voting power, but.
But I think everyone, you know, with the backgrounds we have in front of us, I think more opportunity to share and sort of be in touch with different segments of the community is pretty, pretty important here. I think it would benefit the group in general, so.
I think everybody is fully qualified and the interest is obviously genuine among everybody. For no other real reason, I guess, I had to find a way to navigate through this. I like the fact that we have three new people that are not currently on boards in town, and I think that's great. And Erica, you're in a lot of stuff, so we know you're, we know you're motivated. We know you're involved in the town and your volunteering is, it's highly noticeable. So if we were able to create the alternate, I would probably put you in that position and have the other three be on the board. It's just really nice to get new, new folks in and if that's a bad way to go about this and making a decision, please let me know. Joan?
Is there a job description for this position?
We just talked about that a minute ago, charge. We did, before you came in.
They're basically, they're going to be establishing the rules and regulations and the criteria in order to execute the Section 3D, the law that allows this tax to go forward. And then being the ones responsible for the distribution of it.
And how much, how much money do you leave in this account at this point?
It's, it just started, so it's not a lot. I think the last I checked, it was 250 bucks.
Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you said it's, it's wonderful that so many people have come out and are interested in this job. So that's great, yeah, it's, it's, you know, not all the, not all the committees have stirred up that kind of interest, but this is a, you know, I think this is a good.
Yeah, people jumped on this one.
Yeah, it's a good, something good for the town.
And you folks that have asked, the one here, given the fact that we just spoke about this, this is not a short-term appointment. This is an ongoing, you know, there'll be meeting minutes and you're going to have to make decisions and vote and you're going to have to have regular meetings. It really becomes, you know, an ongoing routine rather than a once and done like some of these other boards and committees that, once they reach a decision, that committee or that group disbands. That's not what this is. This is ongoing, that will require all of those, public meeting notices and all the rest of that stuff. Yes.
So I'd like to make just two comments. The first is, is that I have no objection. You have three other people that have a lot more experience in the financiality and legal and all that. So I have no objection. The people with the best qualifications. I just want you to know that upfront, because it's a hard decision. And also, if you're trying to make a decision in front of all of us at the moment, I would think you would want to give it a little more thought as to how it would benefit the town and let us know what your decision job after you've had a chance to mull it over a little bit. Because I find through the moment decisions without discussion usually the best ones moving forward.
Unfortunately, as a board, we have to have all these discussions in public forum. It does make it very difficult.
It's very serious.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying.
And point taken, very much appreciated too, and I do understand that. And, you know, as I said, my decision-making may be flawed, maybe not. But I think every one of you would be great, honestly. You all, I mean, don't diminish your experience.
You know, all the financial people, lawyers.
Well, you see, you kind of need a rounded role. You need a lot of different angles. You know, you've worked with elderly and critical care and you understand that your role may be very good at actually deciding who is greatest need. So, you know.
I'd sort of echo, sorry, just to jump in, what Leah said, where I know, we know Erica, you know, we all join on committees and it's nice to have folks that are new and that's okay with Erica as an alternate.
That's fine, because I'm still on the land use and it's being shortly, so who knows? I may be.
Yeah, so I think it's, I kind of, I go.
I see you, Joan.
I just want to say, I don't want to be a stick in the mud on this, but the statute doesn't allow for an alternate.
Okay.
For an alternate.
Okay. I tried sticking.
Sorry.
Well, there's certainly, these will be posted meetings. There's certainly nothing from stopping anyone from attending and providing input. Joan?
So does the statute also say that you have to have a three-member committee and not four?
It's a five-member committee with three resident appointments. The treasurer collector is on it and then the chair of the board of assessors is also on it.
Did they get appointed in this? Or were they automatically appointed?
Those appointments were made at the last meeting.
Oh, that's right. So is that what you were thinking? Is that how we're going to? I don't particularly have a strong. I'm particularly, I think, Ms. Erica does bring some corporate skills into the process, which is, I'm coming from that background, so I'm biased towards it, but that's just my thought on that. They're all long-term town residents.
Yeah, I think, I think I mean, you know, Nicole, Ann and Lori. And then, you know, because I, you know Erica, like you said, it's sort of, it's good to have some other participation in town and I think that's something that Erica has joined us in a lot of stuff recently, so she knows how valuable that is and important it is to the town. So I'll, we'll go with that. Or we could take another meeting and think about it. If we'd rather.
My feelings are not going to be her.
Yeah. No, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's going to be, you know, an important group that's going to, you know, lift off and then it'll be sort of interesting the trajectory it takes. And folks may find, like I said, that are busy along the way and, you know, we have others that are interested, so.
Well, we can go with this and can all see how it goes. And if someone wants to drop off, we know we've got people waiting and.
And I just wanted to be, I just wanted to be careful that when you, you know, you see. A lot of times people sign up for things and then after they get into it, they go, oh my God, I didn't know it was this. You know, it's like a school committee candidate. They want to run for school committee and then they realize there are all these subcommittees and all these meetings and all this email. It's, and then they go, oh my God, what I get into. So this is not like the building committee or the, yeah, there's no, this is an ongoing thing. And there are public meetings and, you know, there may be times where you got to get up or the chair of that group will need to get up and speak at town meeting on a particular. You have to be, you know, this, this is not insignificant in terms of its work.
But I don't think it's going to be, it's certainly not going to be like with this group.
Not at all. I don't mean to infer that it's that, that deep.
Initially, there'll be some.
But it is, you know, it's, it's, there's a, there's a time commitment that's involved in the thing.
Joan?
Take it from me, you know, you're not a member of the committee. You can still go to the committee. Oh, I'm wrong there. And have your say. So it's great to see so many people interested. And as I said, you know, I hope even if you don't, you can't and can't select everybody, but, you know, whoever is on the agenda, I hope you'll still go to the committee and keep everybody in line.
Keep everybody.
Sometimes that's the best way.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm going to do, right?
Everyone's good with that? I mean, again, it's.
All right, so our motion here will be to appoint Ann Farina, Nicole Roth, and Lori Brooks to the Taxation Aid Committee.
For a term that expires on June 30th, 2025.
Twenty, I'm just trying to look that, why is it 2025 and not 2024?
Because.
Because that's already, yeah.
It's already checked.
I'm sorry, yeah. I like living in the past.
My first draft had 2024.
Before you take your vote on that, just clarification. The entire committee disbands in June 2025, but.
Well, it just, you'll be reappointed.
You gotta be reappointed.
Reappointed.
Right, that's true for all of, all the boards. It's not just specific to this group. And if someone wants to opt out, that's, you can opt out anytime you want, but that's certainly the time to do that and say, you know what? It's as a work.
I want power, I'm out of here. I'll second that motion.
All right, any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Well, thank you all, honestly, this is, you know.
It's a luxury to have volunteers.
It really is. All right.
Could we get a copy of this statute?
Yep, we'll email it, we'll email you the materials and help you get started.
Yeah, great.
Cool, thank you.
All right, we have one set of minutes from August 13th. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we appoint the meeting minutes from our August 13th meeting.
Point to approve. We can approve those.
What I did.
Yeah.
I will second the approval of the meeting minutes from August 13th.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda was for a time slot for Brian Flynn. He does not appear to be.
I didn't realize he was on the agenda. I don't know if he's answering, so he has a whole presentation, so I don't want to speak for him.
Okay. All right, well, we'll jump ahead then. The next thing we have is to call the special town meeting for November 18th, 2024.
The 18th?
Yes.
I get a little fuzzy when we start getting close to a major holiday.
Yep.
Yeah, we looked at that.
Did we look at that already?
Well, Jason and I looked at that.
Oh, we did talk about it. I talked with the chair about it.
So we have.
The 11th is a, the 11th is a holiday. They do it on the 12th. On the Tuesday, I was, we would, we were just thinking, keep it on a Monday because people are in the routine of having it on a Monday. So that was the, and then the election is the week before.
Yeah.
So it just, it was just a tough.
Yeah, well, and then Thanksgiving is a week and a half.
It's a week and a half.
Half this year.
Yeah.
It's on the 28th.
I don't know, guys, I guess.
It's 28.
What would you like to do? I'm, I dig it either way. I'm just looking at typically when we've done this, oh, we have a presidential election in the mix and a holiday on the 11th.
Well, that week is free.
It could be on the 12th.
No, I'm, if, if my comrade college on the board will, I'll, I'm going to do it too.
I think I keep it as is, so it sort of breaks the weeks up, breaks the weeks up a little bit. Presidential election, Veterans Day, you have a meeting, Thanksgiving in the background there too. And hope people are able to attend and we'll get the word out and get that ball rolling, so.
Can I say one thing? This motion, it should be November 18th and the warrant should close on October 21st, 2024, not 23rd.
Sorry about that. So move to open the warrant for the special town meeting scheduled for Monday, November 18th at 7:00 PM.
I will second that.
On, on 7:00 PM, this motion not, doesn't read correctly.
So we want to open the warrant.
I got that, but we're saying that at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, September 11th. What's that?
It's the opening of the warrant.
Okay, so we're going to open the warrant on Wednesday, September 11th of 2024 and to close the town meeting warrant on Monday, October 21st, 2024 and not 2020. So I'm living in the past.
I know.
I'm just too bothered by it. At 4:00 PM. So special town meeting, Monday, November 18th. Warrant opens tomorrow and closes October 21st at 4:00 PM. Second.
Any further discussion on that?
We, I just want to say, you have a very, very rough draft of the warrant with some substantive articles on there. It has not been reviewed by town council, so the language will undoubtedly change. But the warrant, the subject matter of the articles will likely stay the same unless there's, unless the board wants to see changes on that regard. So just let me know.
Okay.
Does it not, such decision does not need to be made tonight?
No, not on, not on the articles. So, alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Next up, we have appointments with the NPIC designee on the Economic Development Committee. A little explanation on that?
Yes, so, so the designee from the Economic Development Committee on the Master Plan Invitation Committee resigned. So they need to replace, it was Kate McTuck who resigned. So Kathy.
Kate McTuck?
Kate McTuck. And so Kathy generously stepped up to the plate.
Great.
Okay. Anybody care to make that motion?
Yes. Just want to read through this for a second. All right. Move to, I move to appoint Kathy Smeesek. Smeesek to the Master Plan Invitation Committee as a representative of the Economic Development Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. Second.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, number eight, the tax abatement for David Simmons on the property located at 100 Simmons Way.
This one's just.
Little house.
This was an error, basically, that we corrected.
Yeah.
That's correct, yeah. So it's not a lather of that context to it.
Yeah, there's an overpayment of taxes on property that the town actually owns and this is to reimburse Mr. Simmons.
That's correct.
All right. You, um, what? Do you have, yeah, what's, for the benefit of the people that are here?
Okay. So, I think in 2018, the town accepted a donation of land on 108 Pleasant Street, which is now 100 Simmons Street. And also entered into a life estate agreement on 114 Pleasant, on the same old. So the town took possession of the property in, I think, the latter half of fiscal year 2019. So the last two months of fiscal year 2019, the town owned the property. However, the town never stopped assessing real estate taxes to the former. to the former owner of the property since 2019, fiscal year 2019. And the former owner has paid the property taxes on this property that the town owns since then. So, so this is essentially to make right, make this right. And based on the assessor's recommendation and calculation, we owe the former owner of the property $19,926.72. And so the recommendation, my recommendation is to... And we sought out guidance from the state on how to handle this because usually abatements are done on an annual basement, on an annual basis. So this is based on the state's recommendation that the select board request that the Board of Assessors abate this amount. And then we rebate the funds.
Okay, so let me ask this question. Abate this amount over some period of time? How's this, how's this guy gonna get his money? One sum check?
Yep.
He is.
Yep.
And how are we gonna handle that in our budget? Twenty grands is a lot of money to kind of...
It sure is. So fortunately, the town has funded its overlay annually. And so last year, we, in ARPA 24, we funded that $30,000. Same year, we funded that $30,000. And there's a balance, there is a balance in our overlay too. So we are able to, we are able to pay them from the overlay, which is, for those who don't know, our overlay is to fund property tax abatements. That's why we fund our overlay. And so it's an appropriate use of funds. And the funds are there to issue the abatement.
How much was that again? Thank you.
Just an unfortunate error. It's for the purpose of that, why isn't it in the budget?
Yeah.
It's designed for us.
And going forward, we have this administrative process.
Yes, it was just...
Solved.
I, I think at the time, it was just, there was confusion with the fact that there were two parcels and there was, there was an understanding that the life estate agreement covered both parcels rather than just the parcel that the house is on. I think that's what, that's what caused it.
And he's given that check. Is he gonna get a $10.99 or is he on his own with that?
No, he's, I, I don't believe it.
It's a reimbursement, so it's, it's an overcharge.
No. And, I mean, not to forget, he generously donated property, which is, this property is where our water tank is located.
Yes.
For clarity's sake. And, and the life estate agreement also, the town will possess that property. And so very, very generous from the owner. And given the fact that, on top of that, he's been paying taxes on property that he donated to the town. It's just, it's just a, it's an issue of fairness, you know, so...
No, it's the same.
The taxes that he's paid, is it just on the property that the well is on? Or is there another piece that the house is on, not being taxed on?
No, no. So the wa, it's the water tank, and he has been paying taxes on that property that was donated to the town. There's a, there's a life estate agreement that the town has entered with him on the property where his house is located.
There are two laws.
And the life estate agreement stipulates that he is responsible to pay taxes on that parcel.
On that?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Are we good?
No.
Yeah.
Kind of an unusual circumstance.
It is.
It sure is.
Sue?
Just a minor public comment. I think that this reimbursement might well be accompanied with a letter. Maybe not accusingly apologizing, but with some amount of apology and acknowledging that the town was at fault. And he did question this along the way and was told, oh, no.
I'm sorry, he questioned the what?
He questioned this along the way. He didn't just come in and pay it because he didn't think he owed it. Questioned it and was told, oh, yes, you do owe taxes on this piece that you had given away. And he questioned it again. I think when he saw that this is going to be a cell tower there generating revenue from the town. And he came back in again. And I think that's what got them all holding. So I just, I would just suggest that a letter might accompany that check.
But that is, that's when I learned of it, is when he came in with the advertisement for the, the RPU issued for the cell tower. And, and in the, in the advertisement, it said town owned...
Right.
Water tank, or town, on town property.
Yeah.
And so he came in with the ad and, and talked to me about the situation. And so that, that was maybe a month, a month or so ago. Maybe a little more longer.
Yeah.
And then, so at that time, that kind of did get the ball rolling for me to look into it a little deeper. And working with Judge Collector's office and the assessor's office, we did discover that this was an error.
Yeah.
We, we take the steps to correct it and acknowledge that it was a mistake and make sure we reimburse Mr. Simmons. And I don't disagree with the letter just saying we made a mistake and we apologize for the inconvenience. It's probably a good, good practice, so...
Yeah, of course. Thanks, Sue.
So I move to request the Board of Assessors grant a real estate abatement in the amount of $19,926.72 to the pro, to the property located, or for the property located at 100 Simmons Street due to an inadvertent clerical error caused by the Land Use Code not being charged to exempt...
Changed, yeah.
Changed to exempt and therefore erroneously generating real estate tax bills in David Simmons's name after the town had taken ownership of the property.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? None, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Glad to get that resolved.
Well, we were lucky that we had that money in that overlay account because that is...
Yes.
Yes, a big deal.
Very soon. Okay, next up, ARPA reallocation proposal. Shifting some funds around to take care of some issues.
So we have, the board has previously allocated ARPA funds for certain purposes. And some of those projects have remaining balances in them, and they've been completed. So this is just taking the balances of some of those projects and reallocating them, reallocating the money for new purposes, new projects. So the balance, the available, I'll call it, the available balance at the moment is $19,966.18 based on projects coming in under what was allocated. The last chart here is the proposed reallocation. $2,000 for general IT. I'm a little concerned about the IT budget, so I'd like to hold that $2,000 ARPA just to make sure we are sufficiently funded. The town clerk approached me and asked for some funds to bind some vital records that are, that haven't been done in quite some time. And they're kind of loose and folders and books. They're not protected, they're not organized, they're not secure. So she'd like to be able to do that. I proposed allocating some money for the newsletter to mail and to print for the remainder of this year. I think we discussed this in the past, the air handling unit for town hall for the upstairs office space is not working. And it's twenty, twenty, twenty-ish years old, twenty-ish years old. And it's just failing. I received a quote to, to repair it, and it was $2,400, $2,500, which at this point, I just don't think it makes sense to invest any more funds in it. So this is, this $9,800, I'm hoping will cover the replacement of that. I had a company out today looking at it. And then the fire department needs to upgrade its fire reporting system. The, the reporting system they're using now is essentially going away. And they're upgrading it to a new software system. I talked to the fire chief about this. It's more expensive. The upgrade's at $6,500, six, so 65, we expect. This will offset some of the cost. And so he's hoping that we can, rather than, fingers crossed on the budget, which the budget may be able to absorb this, but using ARPA for this one-time upgrade.
Yeah.
We have the money available. I think it makes sense just to...
Just to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any assistance that the new, as a Patriot, right?
Yeah.
Is this gonna align with their systems and everything?
So that's one of the reasons we're doing it is because the expectation is all of the departments in the region, in the region are going to the same, to upgrading to the same system.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any buying power? You know, if all of...
Yeah, potentially, potentially. They're, they're trying to leverage that.
Cool, yeah. We're just...
Yeah.
I mean, you're already thinking of it.
No, no, the chief, this is the chief, the chiefs are kind of working collaboratively.
Yeah.
So potentially.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. No, I have no problem with this. This is, we gotta use the funds here.
We do.
So let's...
They need to be, all the funds need to be designated by the end of this year and then spent by fiscal year.
Then that's best of. Okay, I move to reallocate a total of $19,966.18 of previously approved ARPA allocations as listed below. I'm gonna ratchet through those. Select Board Newsletter, $25.54. ARPA Reporting and Compliance, $9,520. IT Upgrade, $620.92. Election Ballot Drop Box, $355.88. Town Hall Electrical, $68.73. Fire Electrical, $48.77.87. Fire HJC, $350. Government Services Remote Laptops, $2,236.92. Police Vest, vests, $1,062.23. Police Cruiser, $713.09. Salt Shed Roof, $135. For a total of $19,966.18. And this is how they're reacting on that thing, so... Um, that's on, this is on the back sheet.
Yep.
General IT, $2,000. Vital Records, $1,000. Newsletter, $2,100. Fire Reporting System Upgrade, $5,000. Town Hall Air Handling Unit, $98.66.18. Total, $19,966.18.
I will second that proposed reallocation.
All right, any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good, thank you. Okay, the designation of the Union Building Designer Services Evaluation and Selection Committee. Another committee?
Yeah, so as part of the designer selection procedures that the board adopted in July as a requirement to kind of go forward with the designer selection process for the union building. As part of that procedure, which is essentially a state requirement, and this is based on a state, state template.
This is for the exterior?
Yes.
At this point?
Correct. That's right. So what the procedure requires is that the approving body, which is the select board, designate an individual or group of individuals to conduct the search and make recommendations to, back to the select board. And so the, the idea is to have the Union Building Rehab Committee perform that task and then make recommendations back to the, to the select board to make the final decision.
Yeah. Makes, that makes complete sense.
Absolutely.
As part of that report, that will involve that, you know, the top two finalists in, in, like, coming to the, like, a town, coming to a meeting here to say, this is what, this is how I would investigate this design. Just trying to understand, like, the, just think it would be great to have them on camera so other people can interact with it and, and watch it at some point, because I know those...
Well, it's simply for the painting of the outside. It's not...
Right, it's only gonna be, like, redoing some of the woodworking, right, on the sashes that are...
Well, they have to be per the standards because of the historical overlay.
Yeah, I just, you know, for 100K of CPA funds, I guess I'd like the idea of it being usable.
Yeah, so what the selection committee will do is they will evaluate the proposals that we received. Hopefully, we've got a good number of them. And then they'll make a recommendation on the top three, say.
Yeah.
And then present it to the select board. And then frankly, the select board can then go through its own process to make a selection of those top three, top two, whatever it may be. And if part of that process, you wanted to invite them in to present, then that would be a completely reasonable, unproper thing to do if you, if that's, you, but you, you know, kind of wanted to step forth as your own process.
Because I could imagine that an exterior group may have some interior interests as well in some of that industry. Maybe you know better Ron just than Jeff. Do you think there's any connection there?
It depends upon the type of company it is, but, you know, somebody like Fox Painting might bid this, right?
So this is just for the architecture, right? This isn't for the, for the construction, right? We're just at the point where we're hiring an architect to come in and essentially do two things. One, create construction documents that we can bid. And second, to create bid specs that we can bid. So basically, put the bid package together so that we can then go up to market for a contractor to come in and actually do...
There might be some linkage there, interior, exterior? I don't know, I'm just...
We're not anywhere near interior, though.
No, but he's saying there may be some, in terms of hiring the exterior contractor, there may be some connection to that particular vendor to work on the interior of the building. That's all, it's just, it's just a thought process that... You could.
I, yeah, no.
There are guys.
I hear ya, we're just not there.
No, I get that. I mean, I, I, I read this earlier, I didn't...
No, let's just, you know, get the ball rolling, so...
Move to designate the members of the Union Building Rehabilitation Committee as the Designer Services Evaluation and Selection Committee to conduct the designer selection process for the restoration of the Union School Building. And do we want to qualify that as to say the Union School Building exterior?
Sure.
Good idea.
Second.
Second, with that addition of exterior.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any further discussion? None?
We got a question from the audience.
I'm curious, what is the status of the, of the, yeah, the question, proposal, or whatever, whatever it is you're looking for there? Has that, is that going out yet?
Oh, yeah, no, that's on the street. It's been advertised, it's in, it's been in the, uh, not good services, but...
Central Register.
Central Register, thank you. So it's, it's, it's out there. I've received, I would say, a lot of interest from firms almost. So I'm encouraged by the amount of emails I've received and asking for the RFQ. So I think that's a good sign. And proposal due on the 20, on the 25th.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Very good, very good. And that's all we got. Um, I don't have anything else, does anybody have anything else?
No.
Do you want to go through your report a little bit? Couple of things in here.
Only if you want me to, um...
What, excuse me? Was it, there's something on the agenda about signs?
He's not here.
That was just gonna be, uh, all right.
He's, he's not here, so he's, there's no discussion at this point. I mean, he'll probably come back because, you know, Erica says he's done, he's done a lot of research, but, um, he's welcome to do that, absolutely, yeah. I'll reach out for him and see if he wants to come through, through to me.
Yeah.
I mean, we have gotten some comments about this whole sign process thing. Let's listen to what, uh, Mr. Flynn has to say and ask him to come back in a bit. I mean, we, we may need to, uh, to do some administrative work to clarify some things because I've gotten some negative feedback about it too there. Okay? It might need some, might need some work.
Okay.
So, uh, really...
You can just go for it.
Mr. Chaney.
Uh, Mr. Chaney. Yeah, with regard to the sign, um, not by law, but, uh...
Policy.
Uh, policy, uh, adopted by the Board of Lengham. Where did the language come from? Was that from Brighton primarily, uh, which is one thing that I hadn't heard? Or was it, who knows? How was it put together? And, uh, how, what does it actually cover? Um, I assume it covers the town property, but I wonder if anything could be explained briefly. And finally, I noticed there still are a couple of books with signs on the left district property, which I assume is still owned by the town, but I may be wrong.
It is owned by the town, but it is, um, part of the lease agreement.
It's owned by the town but not controlled by the town because we have a ninety-nine-year lease. So the, the sign policy is only relative to property under the jurisdiction of the select board. That's what the sign policy, that's where the sign policy regulates. And it's, it's pretty simple, it, it doesn't allow any private signs on public property and it allows town signs, meaning like street signs, road signs, et cetera, or signs for town-sponsored or town-organized events.
So, um, property controlled by, let's say, the cemetery commissioners, uh, the conservation commission, uh, the town forest committee is not included?
No.
Okay, so, uh, the property there...
As, as, as the, as the right of way is included, to be honest, it's a road commission, so...
But if it's ultimately, like, supervised isn't the right word, but overseen by the select board, then it, it is public property, so for instance...
Common.
The common, like, you couldn't put a...
Town hall.
Yeah, and it's sort of like, you know, we, we don't have someone twenty-four seven monitoring town-owned land, that would be irresponsible budget management.
Yeah.
But, so then, you know, like, you know, that's, you, you know, have at it, but if, if there's a, you know, if there's a, a Dr. Pepper for selectmen sign there, then, you know, like, if, if it's on town-owned land, it's, it's against that, that policy. But I think there has to be some common sense expectation about how it's enforced because we don't have a twenty-four seven monitor of town-owned land in town. The analogy of you're on the highway and you go sixty-six and the speed limit's sixty-five, you're technically breaking the law, breaking the policy, but you don't always get caught.
Well, um, first of all, um, I assume that various towns, many towns have dealt with this and have bylaws or policies, however you want to approach it, uh, that have already been thoroughly checked out with the SJC, case law and all that sort of stuff. With regard to the town, um, uh, again, apparently, um, property not under the direct control of the Board of Selectmen may not be covered by this policy.
Correct.
Um, which would indicate that I guess maybe the boards that do control that land need to adopt a similar policy, uh, at their meetings.
If it shows.
At their meetings. Um, in the past, I have taken down signs, um, at the cemetery because I'm a known student of people who have the signs up. There are lots, there are tombs on the bank and nobody had checked with the Cummings family descendants to see whether their ancestors who were in the revolution approved of the sign on the farm of Westwood Street and Main Street. Um, and nobody spoke to me wanting to put the signs back up. Maybe they realized they were a little off base. But then the town forest committee and the conservation commission will, I'm sure, proceed with the appropriate action here. So the town, in my view, doesn't wind up every now and then looking like a used car block. Uh, I'm all for people putting up signs on their lawns if they want. There was a time, twenty, fifty years ago, when anybody put up a sign, Lewis Tendell's or what they got, but that's, that's the best, it's not a lot of the case. So if people want to put up their signs, well, they can, but under our authority.
If, yes, speaking of individual boards making their own decision, um, do we... Should they be shifting off the policy we have in front of us now that we... It's up to that individual board, I'm just thinking, big picture here, does every, you know, the conservation commission has their land, you know, per se, and the town forests? It becomes very...
You can put signs here, but not there.
Right, you know, like, again, like, it's just, uh...
My, my reading is that there's no, no signs, and that's what they would do. With the exception, of course, of signs that relate to the use of the property, um, you know, announcement of the name of the property, pointing out trails and so on and so on.
Yeah.
Uh, which I think is included in your, my, my view, and I'm changing with both those committees, uh, is that we would certainly copy what you have done, uh, and therefore be consistent.
Yeah, consistency is...
Another issue, of course, of that is the, uh, signs that pop up here and there, advertising garden and even one thing or another, and I think it goes down in my ceiling.
Yeah.
I mean, the language of our policy has been vetted by town council and it is from language that several other towns use.
No.
So, and it's pretty simple, pretty clear.
Consistency is the key, like, I just, I worry about all of a sudden there's a little gray in it, you know, one group and it's like, oh, this creates uncertainty, so.
Joan?
The only problem that I see is that, you know, we do have events in this town that are not sponsored by the town.
Well, the, in which case you can be granted permission by the select board to, I mean, the provisions in that policy for that, right?
Is that, so Jingle Fest and...
Well, so Jingle, I mean, so Jingle Fest receives local grant money to run.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Concert on the Common, same thing. So many, many of these local events, community events are sponsored, are actually sponsored by the town. They're not, they may not be organized by the town.
Right.
Or town staff, but they are sponsored by the town financially through mostly the cultural council. So in, I, I think it's true to the policy to allow signs relative, strictly related to events that are funded through the cultural council in direct department of others.
Yeah, I said direct department, but I was concerned about these other...
Yeah, but there, but you may be right, there, there may be some events that happen that are organized by, um, you know, independent nonprofits in town that can't put their signs in any longer yet, yeah.
There, perhaps, um, you know, your point of using a little discretion and common sense.
Delicate term, right?
Well, you have something that's obviously in the public interest and is nonprofit and so forth and so on. And most of these outfits are, as Jason says, um, somehow are connected to the town anyway.
Right.
Uh, and I, I think it would be probably advisable for the higher machine to be brought into the room. Some interesting, and Robert Dicey, uh, discussions about roads that are laid out and those that aren't. And in fact, my property, close to the center of Westwood Street, only ninety-eight percent of the value is gone because of public usage. In fact, they cut a tree down, I've got a right to the damn tree, uh, they've got a right to cut it now. Uh, that gets a little esoteric and, uh, one problem maybe that there, um, the higher, I'm not concerned that it would be in the loop.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And I think the topic will probably come up again when Mr. Flynn, yeah, will be talking.
I, 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 I'm not, you know, I know you and I have talked about this, I, I do, and the fact that Alan is here tonight with a similar discussion, but I've heard from, I mean, other people have said to me that there, first amendment rights are being violated and how dare we do that, and they're just, I mean, I've, I've heard a lot of stories. I think that what we do need to do, excuse me, I think what we do need to do is to take another look at this thing after we talk to Mr. Flynn, take another look at this thing. We may need to make some modifications to it. I would, I, I'm gonna tell you that in, in my narrow-minded opinion, all right? I think that after we're finished reworking or revisiting this thing that we hold a public hearing, because, uh, the, the, you know, and, and, and the discussion that I've been at the donut shop and, and Kingsborough has been that, you know, we've cut off discussion of this thing and mandated this be done, uh, you know, the, this board hasn't run that way. We, not since I've been around with it, we've always looked at these things in, you know, in a, in a very collective way. And I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we, we listen to Mr. Flynn, incorporate some of what Alan says and we take a look at this. And, and in my mind, I'd like to hold a public hearing on it so that we don't have folks in the town saying that, you know, we've just shut them off and we, you know, that's, that was, you know, this thing got started by, by trying to control all these signs all over the place. And, you know, last week or the last meeting, you know, this contract design thing came up. We can't find, at least, I, I hadn't been, we have, I can't find where there's any language any point that says you can't have that sign for the seal coating guy or whatever. And we can't, we haven't found that, right?
I think, I think it's, the, the language isn't in there specifically that says it's against the, the rules. I think the language says this is what is allowed.
Yeah, it, it used to be, and I haven't looked at the sign by law recently, but, uh, back in forty-seven, I'm, I'm on by law.
Was that in forty-seven or was that in forty-six? I don't really remember.
I'll sort of remind us again.
Signs that, that you, uh, deal with the sale or the use of the property. And when you get to political signs, of course, you do get into First Amendment issues when it's a person's property. My guess is that, um, there's probably an SJC decision out there somewhere that deals with the issue of putting political signs on public property.
When, when regulating private property, it's a whole different ball of wax.
Exactly.
Than regulating signs on public property controlled by this board.
Exactly.
It's a whole different, it's a whole different situation.
You know, uh, people find on the left and the right amazing things in the Constitution that aren't there, meaning the US Constitution, um, and in town for forty years, uh, you know, I'm surprised and amazed at what people find in their constitutional rights. However, you have a lesson.
Oh, I'm with you, believe me.
You have a lesson in, in, you know...
I've heard it all, I, I...
All right, I think we're gonna, um, probably stop it here. We've had enough discussion on this, which is, yeah, Joan, his last question, Joan.
The ACLU, uh, did a, a fact check specifically for the state of Massachusetts. And they said that, um, you can outlaw signs on, uh, public property as long as you outlaw all signs on public property. You cannot say, you put your sign up, but you can't. Okay, that's, uh, that's basically, I'll see if I can find it and I'll send it to you, but, uh...
And that may be where this is headed, that's what I'm saying. It, it can't be content-based.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It has to be an outright ban, and that's what, in my view, the board did. It said no private signs on public property, period. It's no, there's no debate, you know, so.
Okay, to be continued.
I have a, I, I have a distaste over all these slow-down, dustable signs, I, I, I just...
Well, those are on private properties.
I get it, but I...
No, actually, you've never been in one of those, wait.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Where are you going, slow down?
Second to that.
Second.
I was in favor, aye.